Call this meeting to order. This is the February 20th, 2024 Winter Town Council meeting. We are here at the Harvey Hearing Room. We are being televised on WCAT and also via Zoom. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Larissa, roll call, please.
Counselor Tessneri.
Here.
Counselor Facillo. Counselor Munson.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Swope.
Here.
Counselor Aiello.
Yeah.
Vice President Belcher.
Yeah.
Counsel President Leteri.
Yeah, thank you. Please stand for the.
And Counselor DeRus.
I was gonna say, I'm sitting right next to you.
By Counsel Aiello.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes have been circulated from the February 6 meeting. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, others in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those who know, the ayes have it. General information recommendations, we do not have anything. Public hearings, we have two. The first one is that the council transfer $50,000 from Town Council Reserve for a storm water study. This is a motion that I had brought forward at the last meeting, to transfer $50,000 from Town Council Reserve account to a new special article entitled Storm Water Engineering for Phase One or Storm Water Engineering from Tilestone, Girdlestone, and Pico Ave areas or take any other action relative thereto. This money would be coming from, so we will open the public hearing. This money would be coming from the Town Council Reserve. We have already discussed what Wood would incur and they are willing to get started right away and help in this first phase of this process. We still have grant money that we are awaiting, but we are committed to this process to the end, regardless of what happens, but we do feel very confident in receiving the grant. Any discussion on this? Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Yes?
Marcy Hamilton, Precinct Two, do you want to stand? Can I sit down?
You may sit.
Okay. Thank you. I was in contact with Mr. Callow when we thought we were having the big storm and he informed me that the pumps that they are getting will not be.
So this is just for this?
Oh, the $50,000.
Just on the $50,000?
Sorry, no.
But we'll talk about that.
We'll get back to the public comment.
Any other question concerning this? Counselor Munson.
I noticed that we have only $75,000 in reserves.
Yes.
And that means that if we wanted to get more money for more studies so that we could resolve all flooding in Winthrop, we need another source.
Well, we're not going to be solving all problems in Winthrop within fiscal '24, so I think that's like a non-starter. We want to do the best we can and we're starting with what we deem to be one of the most urgent areas. There's also obviously Morton Street, which is in the same classification, if not higher. But this is a project that is in the pipeline as far as, you know, Morton Street is in the pipeline in terms of grant that we have from MVP grant and this is in the pipeline in terms of another grant that we're getting for engineering. But we want to get this project started as soon as we can. So, yeah, we're not going to be solving all problems.
I guess my question is, is how will the the reserve fund be replenished now that we?
Well, this is the Town Council Reserve. So we normally could have gone to a capital stabilization fund for this. I just thought that, you know, we have not used the council reserve this year. This, to me, deems to be a very worthy cause for this instead of going to savings, so to speak. You know, it's six and one half dozen the other. If we had a replenishment, then we would have to go to capital stabilization, you know, or vice versa. But, you know, this was the quickest, easiest way to get this thing going and I deemed it to be an emergency. So let's, let's get the ball rolling.
I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Aiello.
Just my thanks for moving this along so quickly. Appreciate it.
Anybody else seeing none? We will close that public hearing. We will now open a public hearing. The Town Council appropriates $33,564.10 out of free cash to the opioid settlement fund. This public hearing is open. This is more of a procedural item, accounting item. This money comes in through the general fund, goes into free cash, and then for us to use it in the way it's intended, it has to go into a special fund. And that's what this is doing. There's obviously a need and we want to be able to use the funds to do what's best. Any discussion from the council? Any questions? Counselor Tessneri.
Just one question. This is coming from 2023's free cash, right? And then further opioid settlement funds will go directly to the?
Same thing. No, it will go into free cash. That's the way it comes.
Goes into free cash and then we have to move it again?
Yes.
Thank you.
No?
It says.
I think they corrected it. It was only the first year that this happened. They allowed us to put it right into the fund moving forward.
Okay.
So this was just the first year that this happened.
Okay.
It says future receipts will be deposited directly into.
It was a flaw the first year. They told us we had to book it as miscellaneous revenue. We'd rather not use it, so it created this lag on being able to use the funds, but they corrected that for year two, so. Next year.
I'm just trying to realize that mostly likely there'll be another flaw next year. Hopefully, I guess.
A different flaw next year, right?
Any other questions from the council? Any questions or concerns from the public? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. We will be getting back to both these items in old business. Public comment. We will have two sessions of public comment today, so this is the first one. Yes, former President Gill.
Peter Gill, Precinct Five. I'm just here to express my concern about the MBTA proposal to put onto all of us in many communities. And I strongly urge the council to write a letter to the governor and tell him in the governor's government that we are not going to conform to this. It's an overstep of their responsibilities. It's taking rights of our citizens away from us. It's going to cause, I shouldn't say it's going to. It could cause severe crowding. We have enough crowding, enough difficulty getting in and out of town. I thought we only got to. But I strongly urge the council to take quick action, positive action, to tell the state that we will not, given all the unknowns, that we will not conform to that. I'm looking at what Milton did when the selectmen said they were going to do it and Milton put it to a vote. Milton, right now, is kind of on freeze on where they're going next, but they have to fight the state. And I would appreciate your consideration to do this quickly. Not next week, tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Karen Chavis, Precinct Two. Since this 3A zoning has started, we've heard the term evacuation over and over again. I did go online and I went on to the emergency manager, management line, and they referred me to the emergency planning committee. I looked at that and they have four brochures. Only one is available. This committee goes back to Larry Powers, Rick White, and Tom Riley, so you can see how old it is. The only brochure that's actually available is a general information brochure. The other three, one is on hurricanes, one's on the evacuation route, and the other one is on pandemic. We've already done the pandemic, so we must have something to that. But again, I'd like to urge the town manager and the council president, and I did send you an email on February 7th about this, to either ask emergency management to do something or to form another committee so that an evacuation is in place. I'm not trying to make waves, but if you just look at last week when they did close that gate so early in the day, 5:00 in the afternoon, we were already in a bind and the, what I call the Belle Isle Bridge, there was already water coming up over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Still?
Facilin Malis, Precinct Five. I'd like to echo off the points that President Gill had mentioned, that the letter that was sent to the governor, I know it may have been already sent, but I, I think that we need to right now tell her we are not going to comply with this. I think we need to set a, we need to start this early because if we wait on her response, we're going to lose time to gain, gain allies with this. There are several communities out there that have opposition, for example, Nahant, Manchester, Essex, Rowley, Rockport, Gloucester, and I think we, we need more communities out there. I have been sharing the council, the town council email with those communities to have them get in touch because I think we can defeat this with numbers. And it's not going to be Winthrop that's going to solve this alone. And I think we need to get ahead of this instead of waiting until the summer or fall. Because I will tell you, if, if the council does, does decide to comply, we are going to start a petition. We will work for a townwide vote. The other aspect of this is that if the council does comply, and I had mentioned this last night at Counsel Munson's meeting, you know, you guys are supposed to be a representative of the constituents of Winthrop. And if you all decide yes on this and now the town goes and says no, what is the reflection on you as counselors here? You guys are supposed to, you guys are supposed to take our view as the majority and you're doing the total opposite. I just want you guys to take that into consideration. There's a lot of noes out there and there are some, some yeses. And I think by allowing everybody's voice to be heard, I think you guys can get a general census of where this community wants to go with this. But please take into consideration, you know, what the impact it is going to be based off of your vote. And then if we do force a town vote, how does that reflect on you guys as well? So, thank you.
Thank you, Facilin. Yes?
I know, I spoke, Colonel R, Precinct Two. I've spoken about this a few times now. And I probably spent more time than I should have reading into other cities and states and Vancouver on how they've implemented all of this zoning reform of basically eliminating single-family homes in certain zones and to be able to build on them. And again, the more I look into it, the more there is zero, absolutely zero low-income housing built. And multiple planners have come out and said it does not work. The way it's put out, it does not work. So we can be fed all this information from the state. We can get grants to have the state-guided people come in and tell us, you know, this is how it really is. In the end, we're losing our right as citizens of this town to determine how we want our county to be. There is not one city that has benefited from this to create any lower-income housing. If anything, it's created more, a higher cost for real estate. And I keep referring back to LA. The low-income housing in LA has depleted. It's getting lower and lower because of this type of zoning. So Vancouver, the planner for Vancouver, the man is, was 100% yes, we're going to do this type of zoning. I forget his name, Patrick Condon. If you look him up, great guy, great reference. He still supports, you know, zoning reform, but he realized it was wrong the way they're doing it. And that's how this state is doing it. He's actually running for mayor now for Vancouver to try and make changes. And you can see a video. I said I sent it, I forgot to send it to you all. The, the effects of this creates the land to cost more money in every single city that this has been implemented. So you're driving out the low income and creating a situation where housing costs more. So I know Boston's not included, but this morning I just posted about it on Facebook. A single-family home was purchased. Nine units were put in, 10 parking spaces, and it just sold for $4.5 million. How in there will there be an equitable type of living situation for low-income people? That's not what's going to happen with this. You need to really read into this, no matter what the state puts out to you, what companies come in and say, this is the best way to do this. It's not effective anywhere. So we need our council to step up, like Facilin and people have said then. We need to probably set a date for the letter that went out and said, if we don't get a response by this, the council needs to make a determination in that time period right after and say, we need a vote on this so we can have time to get the petition going.
Thank you. Yes?
Yeah, Bill Schmidt, Precinct Five. As I said at the last meeting, there's a lot of problems in this legislation, but there was just an interesting point. I don't know if you folks saw it, for those of you who still read the Globe, but there was a story in yesterday's Globe about Everett. Everett has had, in the last, between 2015 and 2016, they've had a 16% increase in the amount of housing. What was interesting in the graph, they did other communities in the area, Winthrop in that time period has had a 6% increase, which is basically almost 500 units. So one of the things people have to realize is units are going to be built in this town. So the question is at some point, not necessarily this plan, but you should think about in terms of zoning with the whole town in general, where do you want things to happen? Because you see all the developments happening around the center. Forrester's Buildings down, the one on Fremont Street, the Somerset Building, probably the bank, maybe the Bank of America. So because, because housing is needed and the question is what kind of housing is going to be built? And I think if, you know, we're talking about several units a year, you're going to have, over a period of time, you're going to have more units in this town. That's, that's just a fact.
Thank you.
Hi, sorry, me again. I attended the meeting last night. I want to thank Mr. Munson. It was very well-attended. And I just want to, I wrote it down so I don't sound a little off track. After the informational meeting last night, we discussed the ramifications and we talked about giving up our autonomy, about density and safety. We also talked about the legality of 3A itself. It was a healthy discussion and I thank you about that. I thank you for that. There were many points raised and few answers. An interesting note was Mrs. Shavas had said that Mr. Hubbard and Mr. Dimes had done a study years ago about our housing, about our, what was it? It was about our. Low income. Low-income housing, that there is always, there is already a report about that and we did meet the requirement and Mr. Hubbard might still have that information. That was interesting to me. One thing that did concern me was the assumption that there were many councils that are ambivalent or undecided about how they might vote on 3A question and to accept the mandate from the state. And that being said, I realized that some of the discussions became a little bit more political and, and I'm hoping more than, I'm hoping that we leave our politics at the door. I'm hoping whether you're a Republican or a Democrat or an independent, you follow the one Winthrop. We are one Winthrop and whether you vote, whichever way you vote or whichever belief you do believe in, we have to put the town of Winthrop first above our own political beliefs. So that was very important to me. And whether, let's see, where am I? It does not give us any plus sides in the threatening of taking away our grant money. We should all stand together, whatever our political affiliations may be, and fight this three, this mandate, 3A mandate as a town. It will destroy the progress. Yesterday, we had Cheryl Howard come in, a realtor and a person who's in the CBD, and she was saying there are, there is, just like Mr. Schmidt said, there is development happening. And I had mentioned that I feel like Winthrop has become like a granny quilt that is coming frayed. With our appeals board, our zoning, we're not talking to each other, our planning. And I think at the last meeting, you had said something about having reports from the planning board and I noticed that it's coming forward and we should have these on Zoom or on televised so that people who are at home can be informed. And I'm reaching out and I advise most of our residents here to reach out to their neighbors and talk about 3A because some people just don't know. They're not interested. They haven't voted. We, you know, we have a low, it seems like a lot of people do vote, but a lot of people aren't registered to vote in this town. And that's surprising to me. And they don't know who their counselor is and that's surprising to me. So that moving forward, get out and talk to your neighbors. Talk about the issues like flooding, like 3A, like, I don't know what else, other issues, the fire station, all the issues that we have in this town and get more support and get more involved. And that's all I'm going to say about that for this public comment.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, seeing none. I'm sorry, Jack.
Jack Dempsey, Precinct Three. I just want to agree with most of what I've heard today. So reading Lydia Edwards' rebuttal or her letter, her response. You know what? I'm really tired of being bullied by the state government and I'm not going to take it. And I expect you people on the board here to, to stand up for us. Somebody's going to put a stop to this. They do that, they, in Boston, they forced the add extra housing. You can't get, they don't let you buy a car. You can buy a car, but you can't get a resident parking sticker. So this is how they're going to, they're going to just do little, keep putting stuff in like this that's going to take away our rights and our privileges and I'm just not going to put up with it. So I'm asking you people to stand up for us and, and take a hard stand on this. Say no to them and let the people vote. That's the way to go.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Moving on, correspondence. We do not have any correspondence tonight and our esteemed town clerk Denise is under the weather and on behalf of the council, we wish her a very speedy recovery and hope to have her back soon. We thank Larissa for standing in for her.
You're welcome.
I would like to ask now, since we don't have any correspondence, if, if I could have a motion to just move up the MBTA 3A zoning question discussion.
Motion?
So, motion to take out of order, motion by Counsel Belcher, second by Counsel DiMarco, just to take out of order the 3A zoning discussion. We have.
Sorry. It was just a nice little draft coming in.
Does a motion on the table? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. I want to thank Rachel Kelly, Planning Director, for being here tonight. And I had asked a couple meetings ago for us to accumulate some questions for Rachel, to be able to come over, have some time to, to get the answers or the best she can and to be able to come and present to us. And then if we have any questions through the council for Rachel, now would be the opportunity to ask. Rachel, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, great. Hi, everyone. Good to see you all again. Again, Rachel Kelly, planner. So at the last meeting, you requested an opportunity to send some questions to me about 3A and, and kind of get those answered. And a lot of them were kind of commonly asked questions and, you know, themes that we've seen throughout discussion, so hence the name, Frequently Asked Questions. A few of you sent questions and I've included them in a PowerPoint tonight. I reworded some of the questions just to sort of streamline them a little bit. And then some of, a lot of you kind of asked the same question, just worded differently. So if you don't see your exact verbiage there, that's probably, probably the case. I also did focus on Winthrop-specific questions. There was a few regional ones peppered in. And anything, you know, not answered here tonight, we can, you know, potentially answer them at a later time or maybe, you know, if we go the route of a consultant, have them come on and answer them. So kind of did the best I could with what I had and, and so I will just kind of jump in. Next slide. Great. So why are the MBTA communities only in eastern Massachusetts? That's a good question. At the, at this time, MBTA communities is only in this part of the state because it's focused on public transit. So the state wants more housing near, you know, transit-oriented areas, so that's why we have these. They're focused on the T commuter rail and then those towns and cities that are adjacent to those transit stops. It's, the state wants to have more housing near these areas, near, you know, shops, restaurants, parks, jobs and different services. And then, you know, the state's also saying that, you know, can, condensing this housing is better for the environment because it's supposed to incentivize people to walk to work or take public transit versus driving. So that's why when you see a map of this, it's only focused on eastern Massachusetts. That may change, you know, down the road as transit expands or if transit expands, but that's where, that's why this map looks the way that it does. So some definitions, these were kind of the three that came up and they're probably the most common terminology that you might see that you might not be familiar with. I won't, it's pretty word-heavy, I won't read them off to you, but the biggest one, I think, is as of right or by right. And that essentially just means that multifamily housing could be built in these zoning districts by right without having to go for special permit or variance, you know, assuming they're within the zoning requirements that are still, that still apply to a 3A district and not have to go for any additional approval. So when you see the as of right or by right, that's what that means, is that they can build them. And I'll kind of dive into that a little bit more further along, but these are, like I said, just the definitions that you're going to see, developable land. For this specific topic, this just means that it's land that, you know, can be built on. It's not owned by the town, it's public land, or not public land, and it's developable, so it could be built on. That's why, you know, you can't build on, you know, a town park or zone a town park, rather, as part of this 3A or a, a piece of land that couldn't, you know, sustain housing. And then sensitive land, this is pretty applicable to Winthrop and that's, you know, kind of our flood, flood-prone areas, which is a lot of Winthrop and just areas that would require a little bit of extra attention or conservation efforts.
Excuse me, do you want us to hold questions until she's completely finished or should we?
Yeah, I'd rather go through it a little bit and butt just jot questions out because we will have time to ask.
Okay, thank you.
Is it fine? So we can go to the next slide. Also, a super common question, what are the consequences of non-compliance? So this is, you know, statements from the state. The top one, again, I'm not going to read off it because it's pretty text-heavy, but the first statement is just straight out of the Mass General Law, Section 3A about not complying. And then the second bullet here is an advisory from March of 2023 from the Attorney General. It's found online. It's longer than this, you know, bullet, but this is kind of one of the newer points that I haven't heard talked about too, too much and it's just the Fair Housing Act and it's applying to that. So these are the two consequences, it's just, you know, So these are the two consequences, it's just, you know, kind of very technical verbiage, but that's where it stands in these, again, these are online, but this is the consequences. And then next slide is also part of this. So one of the things you've probably seen are compliant, non-compliance with the law may be taken into consideration when applying to certain grants. So these are just a list of grants that the state has referenced and some of this is, some of these are a little bit newer. I believe that this was on in August 2023 post for 3A and these grants, they're claiming that would be taken into consideration if they didn't apply. One of the questions asked was what grants have we used? I've highlighted a few that I've received in the past couple of years and grants that I've used within this town. And then Mass Works was also used for the Center Business District. Myself, personal, you know, within my office, of those five, they kind of totaled to about $600,000, a little bit less than $600,000. So to give you an idea of where they stand. Next one. Is there a way to apply for a variance? Not that I can find at this time. Again, this is verbiage taken from an advisor from the AG. It's just on the MBTA website or MBTA Communities site, but I highlighted kind of that important statement right there. Communities cannot avoid obligation under the law by foregoing funding. So even if you decided we're gonna, you know, forego the funding on the list that was at the previous, previous slide, it, it's, it doesn't matter if we choose to forego that funding. And then the last, the last sentence as well is kind of a key word. Shall a compliant district not provide any mechanism by which a town or city may opt out of this requirement? And again, that's the AG's verbiage. All right, next one. How does 3A differ from what's currently zoned? So 3A creates zoning that allows multifamily units by right. Again, we talked about the by right. Right now, most of Winthrop's zoned are residential and by right, within residential, it allows for one or two family dwellings. And the difference is 3A would require, would require three plus family, three plus unit dwellings by right within a lot of these residential districts. So this is just a little tiny, tiny piece of our table of youth regulations that, you know, are found in our zoning. That's Section 17.12.130. And just for reference, Y means, you know, use allowed or by right. And then you can kind of see down at the bottom, the multi-unit dwellings. SP4 means that it requires a special permit for Board of Appeals. So that's essentially, I mean, there's more to it than that, but that's essentially what would kind of change is that it would be by right. Also, one of the questions that was kind of a frequent flyer was that what's, you know, does zoning still apply? Where can we, you know, use control and that kind of thing? Zoning code still applies, you know, height, parking setbacks, lot size, number of units per parcel. This was, you know, again, a common question. There'll still be these kinds of parameters in place. And struck, construction can still, or still can go through site plan review, but site plan review can't be used as a mechanism to stop construction. So it has to still be maintained, be fair, but it still can be applicable to site plan review. The biggest thing, you know, is that the housing can't prevent family housing or have any age restrictions or anything like that. This is, this is one, I think there was a little bit of confusion. So we had that previous grant, it was a very, you know, small scale grant. Do we have to use the districts currently identified? If we, you know, choose to go this route, no, we're not locked into those districts. We're not locked into those areas. It was just some small scale grant used to collect some baseline data and create a starting point for the town to move forward and have, you know, the tools and information to get started. So we're not locked into it and we don't have to use those districts or anything like that, but it was, again, a starting point. That was a really small grant. The scope of work was predetermined by the, it was MHP Mass Housing Project? And they were the suppliers of the grant. It was very small and they just kind of set out that scope of work, again, as something to get started on. I think a lot of towns took advantage of it to use. And then how was the land analysis done? You know, through GIS, isolating lot size wasn't so much used for the type of housing that currently exists. That was some confusion. It's not identified by, you know, say if there's a one or a two family on a lot. It's a lot of it was done via lot size. So that's how they identified some of those districts. Next one. Okay. Math is not my thing, but why is a densely populated town like Winthrop expected to accommodate more housing than a more rural town? So as, you know, many of us have noticed, this is kind of a one-size-fits-all calculation. So there's the, the four categories, rapid transit, wear, AC. So there's rapid transit, commuter rail, adjacent community, that's us, and then adjacent small town. They use the 2020 census data to calculate the number of housing units that exist in the town. And then each category is given a different percentage and then you multiply that percentage by the number of housing units. So that's kind of where that 882 came from. Just for kind of a comparison, and this is, I think, the point that a lot of people were bringing up and rightfully so. Why is a more, less, less developed town have less units? I used Grafton just as a basic example because it seemed to have significant green space. I don't know developable, how much of that is developable, I'm not a Grafton expert, but just to kind of use it as an example. They have 7,760 current housing units. So they're, they're also an adjacent community, so they have to make 776 housing units. So just to kind of give you an idea. So that's how that number came up, but it's definitely a one-size-fits-all. And, you know, that's why some of these more towns with more green space and open space or at least appear to have, you know, a similar number or even smaller in this case. So existing multi-unit housing count towards the required 3A units or that 800 number? No, so this was definitely confusing. This was confusing to me at the beginning. But compliance with 3A does not include counting existing multifamily housing within any of the proposed districts. So even if, let's say, we had a bunch of open space that we could zone for it, it's kind of the same thing. So if a town has a lot of open space or a lot of undeveloped, undeveloped land, it still kind of counts for the same number. So it doesn't matter what exists there at the time. We must have zoning that allows for the required number of units within the chosen district and then regardless of how many exist, units exist there currently. Was there any analysis done on the traffic schools and utilities or any other infrastructure? Great question and unfortunately, you know, with the first grant, nothing, you know, it didn't permit for that. Unfortunately, it wasn't, wasn't that type of grant and like I said, we didn't have a lot of control over the scope. The additional grant that we have to, you know, do any further study or do any further data collection isn't mapped out for that either. It's just to focus on the 3A and the language and the verbiage and zoning mapping and data that we need for that. So that's not part of this other grant, but that is an excellent question and it's definitely something, you know, to consider. And then is there additional funding for climate resiliency? I couldn't find anything that was directly linked to this grant. So for example, if we, you know, zoned an area that was prone to flooding, would there be kind of a sister grant to that? I didn't find anything that was, was part of that. But, you know, a lot of new development is still subject to local and state building code and flood prone areas, so they would have to follow those requirements as well. Almost done. Is Winthrop responsible for building or funding any of this new housing? No, it's just for the zoning and the zoning language and creating the district. So we don't have to pay for these new units to go in. And then can some of the multi-unit buildings be mixed use? This is kind of, obviously, this is a pretty new feature. This is from August of 2023, but they are allowing now 25% of the housing units to be within a mixed use zoning district. So it could be, you know, first floor commercial and housing above it, which is, which is good for our CBD. That's, is something that, you know, would help small businesses in that area. And then last one is, this is just an estimated timeline and what's next, at least at this point with the existing grant that we have. We're in the consultant contracting process at this point. And then, again, these are just estimated kind of general timeline featuring most of the scope of work. This is kind of fluid at this point. We can move some things around, but this will just give you a general idea of where, where we're at with that grant and then, you know, how we want to go from there. Like I said, there's, you know, some public events and public outreach and times to ask questions and that kind of thing with the consultant and we can kind of take it from there. So I think that's, I think that's my last slide. Yeah, so if you have any additional questions, I will do my best to answer them. I will be very honest. If I can't accurately answer them, I will let you know and, you know, we can kind of go, go from there. I can email you back, whatever's, you know, whatever's best, but I don't want to be spreading any misinformation, so I'll be candid with you if I can answer something.
I appreciate it, thank you very much. I'll ask a couple, then I'll open it up. You talked about consequences. You talk, you know, it's very vague terms, you know, you might not be, you might not have certain grants that are available, but you're not necessarily excluded from them, blah, blah, blah. You can't, you don't have a choice if you want to do it or not. Is there anything that says constitutionally this is even valid?
I didn't...
That'd be challenged.
That's a good question. I didn't get that, I think, far up in the government tier. That's a really good question on, I guess, on probably a federal level where that would stand. I kind of just only did the state level and what they're saying at this point, but I don't know if, you know, that might be a Jim, in-house counsel question on how...
From Jim, to Jim.
Yeah, from one Jim to another. You know, that might be an in-house counsel question on what exists out there on a federal law level.
And just a quick question on the presentation that was made a couple of weeks ago from the consultant and you said it over and over, it was a very small money consultant. Not that the consultant was bad, just that it wasn't a... You know, people look and say, you know, we're responsible for 800, to zone for 882 units and they show us a proposal that's zoned for 2025 units. Now, does that have anything to do with the acreage that's needed to be done? Or is that just, hey, we're going to give you three times what you need and pick and choose?
I interpreted it as take, you know, we're starting, this is our baseline data and then we have to pare it down. I know that, you know, we have, there has to be, you know, equal to or greater than 12 acres is one of, yeah, equal to or greater 12 acres of district and then 50% of that district has to be in one block or one area. So there is that requirement, but in terms of the actual three districts, that was more land area than we needed and that would be kind of pared down to get to a smaller number. I believe that, and I'd have to look at it again, I believe that it is possible that it could be technically zoned for more because of the size requirements.
That's the thing, we're so dense.
Yeah.
To have, to fit the acreage, it's going to be over 882. But thank you for taking the time and I'll go around the table, I'll just go around. So Councilor DeRoz.
Thank you, sir. Rachel, thank you for your work, appreciate that. It's not an easy law to understand, particularly combining it with 40B and the other, you know, related laws to affordable housing. So we're all learning, thank you. Two questions. Early in your presentation, you talked about the purpose of the initial grant was really to impart baseline data, really understand where we're at, what's being required, et cetera. One thing I'm not seeing in the information is what, one of the things that Councilor Swope actually brought up at our last council meeting, which I thought was a very important statistic, is that if the state's goal is to have communities surrounding Boston to have a larger percentage of multifamily housing, have they taken a look at where we're already at on that statistic? So my understanding and Suzanne's understanding is that currently our single-family housing percentage in Winthrop is 36% compared to the state average, which is 72. It's exactly double that. So my read is that in many ways, Winthrop is already well down the path of the multifamily goals that the state is trying to achieve. Was that kind of statistic brought up, discovered in the research and baselining data? Because to me, that would be a rather important point of fact to baseline pertaining to Winthrop. I know that you said in your presentation that anything we've done to date does not count, but I'm just searching for, has the state taken into account that we may be a community that's representative of what they're trying to achieve in the first place already?
Yeah, that's a good question. So I think some of the data, it counts, it's applicable. I don't think it's, it was a situation where we'll throw all that information away. I think it's still useful moving forward. But in terms of, yeah, what exists for, they described it as, and they kind of, the consultant kind of followed this and stuck with this and this is also sort of written within the guidelines, is that existing development that's been factored in, it just has to be zoned for it. I get what you're saying about the percentages and where we're at and if, you know, maybe we already do meet that, meet that requirement tenfold. I think that that's something that we could definitely put on the radar of the new consultant and, you know, the scope of work, you know, has our public meetings and working with the planning board and coming to the town council and all of the, you know, they're going to have to do some necessary data analysis to, you know, get us to a point we want to be at. But I think that that would be definitely a good thing to put, you know, information to have in our, you know, back pocket. So I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a problem to edit in once we kind of sit down with whoever we hire as a consultant and dive in. I'm sure they probably have the software to gather that information if you want to send it to me. That would be great.
Be great. Quick second question, dovetailing on what Kurt brought up earlier in public comment. I think there's a lot of question, I know I hear from my constituents and especially from Precinct 6, but when you look at that map, you can see Precinct 6 in bright, bright lights on that map. The question about communities who have actually complied with, with this type of law, whether it's in Massachusetts or across the country or even outside of the country, as Kurt was mentioning, Vancouver. The question is, do we have any baseline facts and data, any analysis that shows that at the end of the day, if we actually did comply with the law, would it have the intended effect, the desired effect of actually making housing more affordable in Winthrop?
Yeah.
I know that's kind of a magic question, but I want to give you an opportunity to respond with anything you might be aware of.
Yes.
Analysis that's been done to that point.
Yeah, not, that wasn't anything like that done through, you know, that previous grant or anything like that. I understand what you're asking in terms of actual studies, you know, done on our state and everything. And if, yeah, more condos, do they really lower the housing prices? Are they going to solve our problems? I'm not sure. I'm sure that there's, there's, for every study, there's a counter-study for sure. And you can, you know, there's a lot of, you know, educational articles out there, but I don't know of any off the top of my head that would counter that, you know, condos essentially would not meet the goals of what the state's trying to achieve. And I'd be interested, I'll have to look through, you know, if the state references any studies on why this works to back themselves up as opposed to, you know, maybe necessarily finding something that doesn't back it up, but to see what they've referenced. I don't know of any, you know, right off the cuff, but I'm sure there's something on there.
It would be really, really helpful, I think, for us to know because I know from my precinct, I get obviously, and we're going to have a listening session tomorrow, Councilor Melcher and I, with our precincts here in this room tomorrow at 7:00 for people who can attend. But I know that, you know, we obviously get a couple of different perspectives. If you're a homeowner in the town and you had the real estate smarts to buy five years ago, 10 years ago, et cetera, you're probably extremely happy with what's happened in the, in the real estate market. If you are younger and you are trying to be a first-time home buyer and you're trying to consider whether to stay in Winthrop, stay in Boston, you're probably one of the many who has left the state as a result of saying, no, I can't stay here because I can't afford it.
Right.
So it would, it would be a really helpful answer for us to know. If we did what the state wants us to do, would we actually have a more affordable housing market in Winthrop? Or would we not? No.
Councilor Swope.
Hi, thanks, Rachel. Just a hard job. I did have a question. What were, what were the parameters that the consultant was asked to do? Were they, were they instructed to find the best way we could comply with the law and not disrupt the towns as a whole? Or were they instructed to find as many possible ways that they could to build anything that they could? What was, what was, what were the directions?
Yeah, let me just actually write down what we just talked about a second ago. So I have it. All right, sorry about that.
And by the way, and by the way, who decides that? Who gives those instructions in a town?
Yeah, so in, in, you know, any future work, you know, we, meaning Town Council, Planning Board would help guide what, and Public Comment would help guide, if we go the route of districts, where we want to put those districts, what we want them to look like. Would you have to meet the minimum acreage and everything and the minimum? what we want them to look like. We do have to meet the minimum acreage and everything, and the minimum units per acreage. But, you know, there's those parameters that they had to base it on, so we would kind of be able to dictate that. But in terms of what the previous study was done, they kind of started with the baseline of the acreage requirements, the minimum amount of units required per acre, that's all set by the state and it's all within the three A parameters. And then they, what they did is they went through and looked for, just lots that met, met those zoning requirements with like minimum lot size and buildable land and everything like that. The reason, one of the reasons that they kind of just focused on the area along Winthrop Shore Drive was that it just kind of met all the requirements, acreage and the number of units. But the reason that we had the two other areas is that, you know, didn't, the planning board had felt and that we didn't want to concentrate everything into one area and have one part of town just be the target of, of this requirement. And then that's why, you know, those tracts of land can definitely, some of them can be definitely kind of shrunk down, but we wanted to incorporate other areas. And one of the motivations was, you know, our CBD and getting, you know, foot traffic and helping businesses and then kind of concentrating things along areas where there was more commercial area and more, you know, storefronts and everything and where there's already multifamilies and, and kind of larger, larger houses. So that was kind of where those came from. But I think that what the kind of starting point was just finding something that met these state requirements.
Because once, I think one of the things that, like, I was startled with was when you said something about, hey, we could build two thousand units here, I'm thinking, I don't even want to build eight eighty-two. In fact, I don't, yeah, so, I mean, I'm hoping that we can build a lot less. So I guess in the next phase of this, I'm hoping that the next consultant will be looking at how we could comply, but with the least disruption of this community in terms of what we value, which is kind of a lovely seaside place, and, and not make it look like what I see across the Boston Harbor, which is severe. I don't want, I mean, this is not why we moved here. So I'm not sure, I mean, I think it would be wonderful if the town council could see what it is that we are instructing a consultant to do in hopes that we're keeping as much as we can of our town in case we do end up complying with this. And, you know, the, the second point is, we are building, as Mr. Smith said, we are going to build in this town. But could we do it in a way that would be beautiful and make it work? And, and not be at odds with the state, but also not do something to our town that is going to ruin it? If, if we can get there, that would be the best of all worlds, but I'm not sure we can, but we can try.
No, I, I think that we can, you know, we want to, we want to maintain our heart, for sure. So I think that that would be something, you know, maybe if the town council wanted to put together like a list of, of priorities, action, kind of goals of if, you know, like you said, if the, if down the road we end up complying, is things that we don't want to lose and the things that we want to maintain and the things that are important to the town. And I know that Danvers did, I don't want to call it facade-specific guidelines, but they kind of, they did come include in their zoning, in their new zoning, some require, requirements that sort of promoted, you know, development that meshed well with the town and went along with, you know, their downtown and promoted, you know, economic development and positive, positive development. So that's something that I think that we can consider, so that, you know, we don't lose what's at the, you know, the core of it.
Just a couple, can I just one more?
One more.
Okay. Golden Drive, places that are public housing, are they ex, and are they excluded from all of this?
So they wouldn't be, to the best of my knowledge, if I understand, because certain ones, they're technically owned by the state? Yeah, so that we probably couldn't zone for because it's not, it's, it's public, publicly owned.
But so much of the town, I mean, that, that's where we have.
Yeah, really dense housing.
And so it's hard to think that we could have to exclude all of those. Thank you, Counsel.
Sure. Counselor Aiello.
Let me start with a follow-up to that. I think it would be important to get a legal opinion on whether or not we can consider housing authority land or not. I mean, let's just find out what the facts are. So I'll go in the, sort of just a random thing that went along with your presentation. I was glad to see that, first of all, thank you for all the work that you've done to date. It is enormously confusing. The, that, that still issues like setbacks, et cetera, will still be maintained even while you're, we're going through a rezoning process if we're to rezone anything. One particular question I have that we had to deal with here at the council a couple of years ago was that unfortunately, when we redid the zoning in the Winthrop Center, we failed to adequately consult with the fire department to think about being able to sort of get to the top floor and therefore allow some parking in Winthrop Center. When I superimposed that problem on a lot of the streets up by the beach and in Precinct Five as well, which are the two places that are sort of blotted out on the map, I, I do worry about, the height, I think, is, I remember as of right, was like thirty-seven feet or something like that?
Forty, thirty-five.
What was it?
It's probably thirty-five.
Thirty-five, something like that, about thirty-five feet. As to whether on many of these narrow streets, you could actually adequately get a fire engine in. And if you could get it in, does that mean you lose on-street parking on one side of the street? A lot of them have on-street parking. Will this level of analysis get into public safety issues like that? Or is that something separate that we have to sort of think about? You don't have to answer the question.
Yeah.
I can just dump these on.
Okay, no, that's fine.
It'd probably be better for everybody. You mentioned that, that certain things don't count against the eight eighty or if we win our appeal, the four forty. But my question is, sort of like, let's take the rezoning and some of the properties that have been built, take the Somerset as an example. What, one of the good things about this town is it sort of thought about the center and rezoned the center for density, for economic development purposes, and we actually went out and built the Somerset Building, right? Those all sort of occupancy started after the law was passed. I would assume that the zoning, as well as anything that got built as a result of that zoning, counts against the, whatever the bogey is, the four forty, the eight eighty, wouldn't that be the case? And again, you don't have to answer the question, but I think we need clarity on that. That would be a shame, because we actually were thinking about this before the state was thinking about it, and we should get credit for that stuff.
Absolutely.
And, and it should also be clear how much that zoning does produce in terms of, of potential number of units. I would imagine it's got to be at least a couple of hundred, right, in that area? But that's a number that should be ingrained in all of our heads. A, we should get credit for it, so I'd like some clarity on that. The third issue is, talk about sensitive land, and we'll get back over to Precinct Three and, and in particular, but parts of Precinct Three as well. If you go along the beach, what's very clear is climate change is affecting it over there. And I'm wondering if there is a, something we should be thinking about now, which is to change the required or optimized elevation for the first-floor living so that people who are living there stay out of hands where utilities can be raised up. They're doing a lot of seafront communities. One nice thing about that is that if, let's imagine that the first level has to be seven feet above grade to survive the next fifty, hundred years, you could put parking underneath that level so you could get the off-street parking. That was a big concern about not having off-street parking tied into this. But then that worsens the issue about fire department response, because now I'm assuming the thirty-five feet pivots off the first-floor level, so you're really, you're really almost forty-four feet in the air. So, you know, the, we need to get into a fine-grained analysis of how this stuff can work, or perhaps doesn't work in many neighborhoods. I think it's also important to sort of, before you got here, we actually got some sizable mass development grants for the center. So I know you use a six-hundred-thousand-dollar figure of what you're aware of during your time here, but we ought to really reach back. I mean, I think that number is in excess of ten million dollars that we've received from just that one program. So it's not inconsequential in terms of getting shut off from certain funding sources. There's some pretty big funding sources that we've been, had the luxury and, and thanks to the speaker, I think, a lot of this, the former speaker, were able to land some, some really nice assistance. I've read that a couple, and I'm going to be out of my league, I'm just going to use a term and tell you what I think it means. But some of the communities, when I'm reading in the paper, are using a program called ARC GIS, which allows you to do a fiscal analysis on the consequences of building, certain kinds of buildings, et cetera. I think there's a big concern that has been appropriately raised by citizens about impact on schools, impact on police, fire, et cetera, et cetera. So we ought to use, get one of those programs and have the consultants on with it so that we can see, okay, what kind of revenue comes up, but what kind of costs? Is it a plus, is it a negative, is it a wash? I, I think we need to know it there. Can you go back to, up to the last slide? I just had a question on process.
Can you give me one second? It's closed.
Bring it up, I don't know if you can bring it up.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, but anyway, I saw that there was a public meeting and then I saw there were planning meetings. And one of the things I think some towns did this well, which is they had sessions where they allowed citizens to think about and offer alternatives of how you could accommodate growth here, growth there, growth there, stuff that, you know, I can tell you, me as a counselor, that's, I don't think I have a wheelhouse anywhere, anywhere on anything. Certainly not an expert, but there's a lot of talent in this town and there's a lot of people with great ideas. And I, I just want to make sure we bake in the ability for people to bring their ideas to the table and to develop a wide range of alternatives, alternatives, because I would hope that this council's presented with the alternatives. Maybe there's a recommended alternative, but to see what, what alternatives are there. And then the last comment I'll make is just to follow up on, on Counselor DeRoz's thing. I've been searching for studies. I see presentations from planners saying this is the greatest thing in the world. I've seen presentations from planners, I think Kurt, Mr. Malas, I went to the site on that stuff, and they're all persuasive. I don't see any published, peer-reviewed, studied, studies that you can say, okay, this stuff has been stated and people checked, independent experts checked on and all that stuff. I think that's what we need, if you can find it. There are plenty of presentations and opinions. I think we need serious academic studies that have been, that have been peer-reviewed.
Definitely.
And that is it for me. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor DiMarco.
Before I go, Rachel, was there any, any answers in addition to that, that you had for Counselor Aiello on some of his questions?
Yeah, I think when he was talking about the timeline, I think we'd want to get feedback from the public and kind of hands-on feedback before we, you know, locked down any multiple alternatives for the districts. So what we have worked into the scope of work is we have, you know, kind of a basic public meeting to really dive into the, you know, back to basics, as I kind of called it. There'll be the town, Planning Board meetings, which I've been calling working meetings, but, you know, there'll be opportunity for public comment there as well. And then kind of to sort of answer what you were talking about, I do have in the scope, I've been calling it kind of an open house, where we would have an opportunity, you know, some proposed districts, probably multiple districts, and maps and everything, and kind of a more hands-on activity of a meeting where people could come in, we'll have a set amount of time, kind of flexible, come in when it works for you, works for your schedule, you know, in the evening, and just be able to sort of interact one-on-one with the consultant, ask questions one-on-one. And, you know, I'm hoping even have opportunity where they could, you know, mark up the map and, and give feedback on, on an area, because no one knows the town better than your residents do. So I'm hoping for an opportunity like that, once we get a little bit further in the process, so that we're not, you know, working off of anything too basic, we've got a little bit more, you know, we've moved forward a little bit more. But I think that that, that will be really helpful. And it's also an opportunity, not everyone likes to speak in these kinds of settings, and this will just be really casual, and like I said, just really flexible.
I, I think that would be great, so I applaud you for that. I think it's also important to sort of capture it into a little presentation so that you can get back to the planning board and say, this is the kind of things we heard, and it could be vetted. But people at least know that they were heard once after they had shown up and shared their ideas. So thank you, that's great.
Counselor DiMarco.
The first thing I wanted to ask was, we've been put into the category of adjacent community, obviously. Us and Nahant are both in the adjacent community category. This is, obviously, we've talked about the adjacent small-town category. I would love to know what the definition is of adjacent small-town, since Winthrop and Nahant are the two smallest towns in the state of Massachusetts.
I have that.
Geographically.
It's not based on size either.
Yeah.
It's based on net weight, we invite a community that has.
So then what's an adjacent small-town?
So the adjacent, the adjacent small-town is more, it's more like definition-based that the three A came up with, meaning there's no minimum land area for development. So I, I just pulled this from, from the state, determines is appropriate. So it seems, at least to me, that it was just towns that were like.
It just seems to me, they just said, you know what, we're going to make you an adjacent town, and we're going to make you a small town, we don't care. That's what it says to me.
Yeah.
I thought it was population-based.
Yeah, and then also, you know, we're considered adjacent because of orient heights. And then I think, and then one more removed is the small towns, but.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's by, yeah, population and then size as well.
So it, it's funny, a lot has been made about the fact that Boston is exempt from this. And, you know, I went and I wanted to take a look and see if Boston was doing anything zoning-wise, and they are. They're looking at a bunch of proposals where they're adding to their dens, where they're looking to add to their density. And at the same time, you know, they're actually talking about eliminating parking requirements when they rezone in Boston. Boston has absolutely nothing to do with it on face value. Why do I bring this up? You know, I don't agree with what they want to do zoning-wise, but at least they have the right to say what they want to do. They have a certain level of autonomy that we are not apparently getting from the state. You had said that, I, so I think it's, I think Boston should have the right to decide what their zoning is, just like Winthrop should have the right to decide what our zoning is. So my question to you is, essentially, we got a grant for a consultant to come in and help us. This consultant's work is still going on, apparently based on the timeline. It looks like the consultant, no?
No, no, that was the first-phase consultant that was expired last year.
Okay, so what was the, the February to March timeframe?
Is to look for another consultant.
From the state?
Not from the state, but another consultant is, I believe, been one consultant that's replied. And the town will look into the possibility of either picking that and working with that, or going out for another bid. Totally different consultant. First, I think, was maybe sixteen thousand or fifteen thousand, this one's like forty-ish. This one's forty-eight or whatever it is.
And this would be paid for by a grant as, as well. How about rejecting the grant? I'd rather not have somebody from outside of the state. I, I, I'd rather decide our own zoning and not let somebody from the state tell us what to do. Tell them to mind their own business.
Yeah, so the consultant wouldn't be anyone from the state, it would be like a private sector consultant, like UTL.
Who's dealt with conforming to these state guidelines, correct?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'd rather just do it ourselves. I don't, I, I, I'm of the opinion, I don't want to see that map again with twenty-five-hundred spots. I'd rather just decide as a town, we have our planning board, let's just do it on our own, what we have to do, and Winthrop will take care of Winthrop. That's all I got, thank you.
Vice President Belcher.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel. Touching on what Counselor Aiello mentioned about the six-hundred-thousand-dollar number, could we get a number you won't? could we get a number, you won't have it right now, but for the past like ten years in those grants, just so we have a good idea of the money we're losing and that kind of, or potentially. That kind of brings me into the next question, which is, has there been a cost analysis done at any level based on if we zone for these new units? And they are eventually built, right? Because that is what happens when you zone for things. It's gonna be an additional cost to the town in infrastructure, public safety, schools. And then is the state gonna increase our chapter seventy funding, all of that along with it? That's something that I'm really concerned about, that potentially the loss of, maybe loss of these granting opportunities will maybe not outweigh the additional cost to the town with increased density. And then I just also wanted to go back to the thing about what counts and what doesn't count. So say we did, just as an example, say we had zoned all of Shore Drive from Shirley Street up to Winthrop Shore Drive as multifamily by right. So it would just be the total number of multifamily units that could be built in that space would be the number that they're looking at, right? It doesn't matter what's there now. So the things that are there don't exactly not count, but they don't count.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Council of Bots.
Thank you. I, I'm just floored by this. It just seems so sloppy and so ridiculous that, and unlawful. I'm not sure if it's unconstitutional, because I know the state has had precedent in telling what towns, what they can do in terms of zoning. So it's not necessarily unconstitutional, but I would like to get you to kind of do a little homework, if you don't mind, on whether it's unconstitutional or not. I just, uh, I just can't believe that a state can force a hundred and seventy-seven towns to do this one-size-fits-all type of stuff and not even apply the amount of acreage that's available, the amount of density that's already currently in existence. I'm reiterating what everyone else has already said, but this is appalling to see that a state can go ahead and be so forceful. I mean, you said it earlier, it's bullying. And it doesn't make sense to me. You know, the fact that we have multi-units already that's not getting counted, the fact that we have only thirty-six percent of our housing being single, single-family doesn't make sense. The fact that there are no variances allowed is ridiculous. I will say that I think that that is, needs to be vetted out in terms of variances. What is the process legislatively to get variances? I think that we should probably call upon our state rep and, and Lydia to see if we can get them to legislate and fight for us. Because as of right now, to think that what we've done already to take on the burden of housing and the, and it doesn't even get it, like, we don't get credit for that? That's, that's not fair and it's not right. I guess I have one question for you and then I have one follow-up statement. In terms of what counts, can you please delineate exactly when it would count? I mean, we have currently several buildings underway. When would it count? When wouldn't it count? I know you're the messenger and I feel a little bit angry, but not at you. Um, so I don't want you to take it that way. I just want, if you could just kind of help delineate exactly when, so is it when they finally open the doors and all the electrical is done? Is now, you know, they can go ahead and say that is now officially the time it counts? Or when the planning board approves or the Board of Appeals approves? Can you just figure out when the exact timing and like what the cutoff would be? I know that we have to get a, a decision made by the end of this year, but uh, when does that, you know? Do you have an answer now? It sounds like you might have a little bit of an answer.
Um, I'm more kind of, I think, clarifying. So when would, um, I say a development count towards the eight eighty?
Right.
Um, okay, so I think in this terms and this is one of those times where I'm gonna say I'm not a hundred percent sure and I can either wait or um, answer now, it's kinda up to you. But um, I understand it is, once the zoning kinda goes into place, um, you know, that's us meeting those requirements, not when they're built. If that is helpful.
So January one, two thousand twenty-five.
Let's say if you go the route of adopting the, the zoning and the new districts and everything like that, that's when it kinda goes into effect. It's not so, there's no timeline to build.
But the process of building is years. So to get a hundred units built will take anywhere between two to three years. So when in that building process, is it when the plan is approved or was it when the actual doors open? And that makes a big difference. And I think that we should have, as part of the amendment, all things that are currently underway or recently built should be applied to that. So I guess then, I, it kinda puts us in a, a moment of decision for the town and for the council. We can either be, you know, kind of paper compliant and try to get this multi-unit kind of zoning done, but have ways to kind of stop some of the housing from actually being built by having preset zoning in place, like whether it be heights or setbacks or, or parking requirements. Or we can be defiant as a town. And, and I think that being defiant can come in a lot of different ways. We've written a letter, we've asked for some delays, we've asked for some, a, a, a different kind of categorization of our town being adjacent small town. Um, but I think that we should really consider being defiant and, and saying, you know, no, this is unlawful and we should push back and get amendments to this law that seems rushed, hurried. I mean, MMA wrote a very lengthy letter in defiance of these guidelines that were set by the state showing, and I think that it would be great to just make these public, but the MMA wrote how this is not well-written guidelines. So the, the whole law is right here. This is the first law that was approved, a two-page. And then it turned into a sixteen-page guideline that was rough. They made some revisions based on people and towns making comment and MMA trashed it. They beat it up and said it was poorly done. There was no way that a cookie cutter system could work. And I, and I, and I stand behind that and I would be willing to make a motion that the council does vote. I mean, even if, let's say, the worst-case scenario happens when we say no, they say, stop all grants, you know, these three things. Well, that's not the worst-case scenario. That's not that bad. It's a lot better than having our future dictated for us in a way where we would fail as a town if we had to comply to this eight hundred and eighty-two. There's no way we could afford a new school and all the public safety that would come with it if we had to comply. There's just no way. We're already at one hundred and five percent capacity with the schools. There's just no way we would be able to take on, we would have to build another school. Where's that eighty-five million dollars gonna come from? You know what I mean? It doesn't make sense for us to be forced into this. So I guess that concludes my statement. Any questions?
Council Tassaneri.
A lot of my questions have already been asked, but since it comes to. First thing I would wanna do though is say thank you very much, Ms. Kelly, for your work on this presentation too tonight. Um, and on going out and, you know, hunting down all those answers to a lot of the questions that, that we asked as a council. Uh, so some of this stuff might sound like a repeat, but I think, um, it bears repeating. Firstly, we should remember that the guidelines that Council Munson just point out, pointed out aren't legislation, they're not actually a law. Uh, they're guidelines that are set down that what will and will not be acceptable by the executive office of housing in livable communities. And they're the ones who will be approving our zoning submissions. The original legislation that was adopted did not really def- make any of the definitions that we're talking about tonight in terms of by right, in terms of um, what type of community or didn't classify communities in the original legislation. So if there's a question of whether or not it's constitutional or whether or not the executive office has the authority to make those definitions and, and make those, or define these enforcement acts, then I think we should have an executive session to discuss our legal options with our town's attorney. If that's acceptable, Mr. President.
We'll look into that.
The other questions are kinda just like, we talked about a couple of meetings ago, there's a lot of confusion around by right. Some folks believe that by right means you don't need a permit, but it doesn't alleviate needing a building permit and needing to go through all these same inspections as, as any other. Correct?
That's correct, yes.
Uh, the other question is, we, we also get to decide, should we choose to comply? What defin- what defines like the height, or what limits height, what limits setbacks and what limits parking? So right now, most of our zoning is one and a half spaces per unit, right?
Uh, it's two, two parking spaces per.
Per unit?
Yeah.
Not in the CBD, but it's.
Yeah, um, I'm kind of mostly going by, yeah, what I see.
It gets difficult to build three units when you need to provide six spaces, right? Um, so that itself could be.
Enough to stop.
A deterrent.
Yeah.
And we could also not hold it at two spaces per unit. A lot of folks who have grown children living at home know that it could be four, six cars per unit. And then there was one, there was a slide and, and Vice President Belcher and Councilman Munson also asked about this on existing units. And the question I have is like, and I think you answered Vice President Belcher's question the way that I'm understanding it as well. It's if we take a block of three-unit houses, zone that to be our, uh, you know, one of our districts, right? And we're gonna allow for three family by right, like a three F by right. And there's all three Fs there. So that all, now that all enters into the, this is now has been zoned to comply with, you know, three A. So we basically get credit for all the existing housing, right? Because that's what complies with, because those lots now comply. And you could build three units there. It just so happens that three units already exist there.
It's.
It's a density and it's a.
Yeah, it's a density, lot size, what's existing.
On three or four houses.
Yeah, what's existing, um, doesn't apply. So, um, I kinda touched on it earlier, but you could have a town with a lot of open space and say it's developable, just hasn't been developed. Even if there's nothing there, that can be developed, but what's existing isn't applied to that eight, eight eighty number. So even if we had a district with eight hundred four family houses, it wouldn't apply. Yeah.
That number's a net, it's not a net number. It's a gross number. So if you had a fourteen-acre parcel and it had available zoning for a thousand, we could just potentially zone that and the net number could be negligible, could be zero. We don't have that.
So you're saying because we have, we don't have the, the acreage to fit in their minimum-sized districts?
Correct.
Correct. Like the, you know, for example, the beach section or whatever, Shirley Street section almost compli- complies with the number of units, but it doesn't, if you're only using one parcel instead of three, then that one parcel has to be fourteen acres or fif- uh, has to be an acreage. Fifty, right?
Fifty.
Yeah. So we don't have that one parcel that's that big. So if you're doing just one parcel to try to comply, it, um, it, it doesn't work, which is why they suggested three, but.
If I could, it, it's.
A lot of space in one point six miles. One point six square miles.
Exactly.
Which is why we asked, which is why we asked for the relief. Saltwater mine.
Right.
When you get to an adjacent small town, the acreage requirements go away. One of the reasons you wanna be in an adjacent small town, because you can do what you're talking about. You can do smaller sub-districts of one or two acres and the district requirements go away. That's what hampers us on this and that's what the consultant was pushed up against. It's the fifty-acre requirement. And then if you do multiple districts, that number drops down to forty, which is why they picked that area on Shirley Street, the large red area, that equaled forty-eight acres. So it met the forty requirement slightly under the fifty, but we needed multiple districts to use it, you know, because we couldn't get to the fifty. I think we, I could make an argument that we probably could've got to fifty if they had expanded that a little bit, but again, now you don't wanna burden one whole neighborhood, which is why we asked for the relief. It's real, just any consultant coming in is gonna be with these guidelines, like you said, that aren't laws, they're guidelines. Using those guidelines in the square footage we have and the mi- you know, the acreage in Winthrop, it's gonna be very difficult, you know, to comply, which is why we were asking for the relief and why we really, if we're gonna comply and you need to be being at a minimum in an adjacent small town, you know, or you push back and, you know, go the other route. But that's, it's really the only way it's gonna work and that's, we, we've all pushed back. Town managers, when I was in my prior town, three years ago, when this first came out or whatever, we all wrote letters and pushed back. This one-size-fits-all doesn't work. It's just, it's, it's, it makes it very difficult, especially here in Nahant and other places with the limited acreage.
Right.
Thank you again.
We could go on and on. I'm not taking any more questions. Mr. Council Aiello had asked for one thirty-second follow-up. We would do that and then we're moving on.
Thank you. Uh, this is directed probably more to Tony. We, we've all talked and many of the residents eloquently about restricted transportation here, uh, impacted by climate change, the fact that we host the MWRA, the fact that we host Logan Airport and what those things could produce in terms of emergency requirements. Can we try to work on putting together a formal report? Cause my guess is that's our strongest argument to get from me, eighty to four forty, and to get the relief on the size of districts.
Yeah.
Um, I'd be happy to help out informally if that helps, but I think putting a formal report together around that access is, would be good. Thank you.
And not to belay this, but this gets to my last point, which is what Council President and Rachel, I talked about. We did get one bid in. Um, the problem is, is the bid came in ten thousand five hundred dollars higher than what we're allotted on the grant. So the grant's around forty-eight thousand. This came in slightly over fifty-eight. My recommendation would be to go back out, um, and then to give us time to put together the wish list that we wanted to scope, uh, that the council's talked about tonight and then see if we can get some additional, reach out, maybe, you know, maybe, who knows? Maybe people missed it. There's a lot of communities right now trying to do the same thing we do. Maybe they're too busy to bid. I don't know. But we, give us a chance to maybe expand the search a little bit and maybe get some more bids, because I would hate to just move forward with one bid, especially where it's ten thousand dollars over, you know, the price, what we already have allotted. So I wanted to put, point that out. That wasn't mentioned, but I wanted to let the council know.
I wanna thank you, Rachel, for taking the time. I, I mean, we could be here for three hours just on this and I'm sure we could ask more questions. You know, I'll state again, I'm a no, I'm a no at eight hundred units. I'm a no at one unit, not because of the number of units, but because we're being told what to do with our town. And, and, you know, there was a public comment earlier tonight how we've increased our unit size by six percent over the last four years and we're gonna increase to do that. We're gonna make this number, not because they're telling us to, it's because that's just what we're doing. That's just the way the C- the CBD, Council Aiello spoke about it, that's creating X amount of units. We just shouldn't be told. I think it's unconstitutional and I'm a no whenever Council Munson wants to make a motion. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate your time. You can go home.
Thanks, Rachel.
Hey, Rachel, thank you. You're so appreciated.
Yes, of course.
If we have other questions, can we contact Rachel directly?
Oh, yes, we, Rachel, oh, can you contact Rachel directly?
Well, whomever.
As long as you copy me. Further chatter just goes for me.
Oh, this is a lot.
Yeah, that's fine.
Any that didn't get answered, so.
We're all calling you Rachel.
That's totally fine. Anytime.
Oh, public comment.
Council President, really quick before we wrap up, we're gonna have a chance to have the new, whoever we decide to be a consultant, present in front of us every.
Whoever we decide to help, I'm sure will be, um, it will be discussed with us before any decision has been made.
Good.
But regular presentations, I mean, on the progress of whatever they are working on?
Yes.
And the wish list of what we need them to do, yeah.
And the direction of giving.
If it's even there.
Right, if we're even.
Committee reports, Finance Committee.
Uh, we did just have a meeting prior to this meeting tonight and we discussed the three items. Two that were discovered in the public hearing and a third that will be under, under old business. And all three were approved from the committee unanimously.
All right, so all three came out with positive recommendation. We'll go over them in old business. School department report, the school department meant last week. School is in February vacation now, so everybody's happy with the schools right now. You know, it's, it's crazy. They've already passed the, the hundred-day mark till the end of school, uh, a hundred days of school. And it's, uh, it's crazy how fast these school years go by and they, they did have one snow day, which, and without a lot of snow.
Pseudo-snow day.
But all is going well with the schools right now. We'll be getting, uh, reports from the principals of each school as we go through the budget process and their plans for each of the schools and we look forward to that. Counselor.
Sorry, did you ask them about Zoom?
No, I, I don't see any intention right now to go back to Zoom from the school committee, from the.
Did you ask?
I did not. I mean, I've talked to them. I did not ask in a public setting.
Is there a reason?
No, I mean, you're more than welcome to ask the school committee.
Certainly, yes.
Town managers report.
Thank you, Ms. Council President. Um, a couple of things, uh, ongoing fire, uh, fire union negotiations are going well. Um, we are making progress. Uh, not done yet, but we're making progress. Uh, making good progress on the budget. Uh, hope to have a draft. a draft, uh, done, you know, draft version anyway, uh, by mid-March to get to not only the Finance, uh, Committee, but also the Town Council. Um, the, I wanna thank, uh, Representative Jeff Turco for hosting us last Friday. For those who could attend, it was, uh, nice to get a little, like, history lesson on the State House, uh, with his knowledge of that, uh, building, and all the, uh, cool areas he got us into, and then also talking about the FY twenty-five budget and the challenges, you know, that the state's having due to, you know, lower receipts and income that are coming at the state level, but, um, we'll, we've got the Governor's Proposed Budget out, so with the cherry sheet, so we're using that as a baseline, and we'll go from there. Uh, we are finalizing the capital plan this week, uh, we will meet the deadline in the chart, I'll get it out before the end of the month. Um, and looking to set up, I know it's, uh, Council Munson, um, and a few others with regard to the, uh, Capital Assets Group, uh, probably something, you know, early March to get that group going, so we can start.
I can set some dates with you, yeah.
Yeah, going from there, so I wanna point that out. Um, also with the, um, you know, we had that, uh, tragic ambulance call. One of the things that came out of that is we're looking at, uh, ambulance coverage, uh, for not only here, but also a lot of the mutual aid calls where the ambulance is going out of town, uh, which, you know, definitely takes the ambulance away from us. Um, so we're looking at, um, a company that does, uh, sort of mapping. They started off doing it just for fire stations to look, you know, where the best fire station location would be, so they, you know, say this is the geographic best spot. Well, that's soft, same software can be used for ambulance coverage. So we're trying to reach out to not only with Revere and Chelsea, but us to say, okay, let's look at the whole area, where the call's coming in, get everybody's call data, and sort of map out what's going on, and how we can improve it, and get, you know, better ambulance coverage. Obviously, there'll be a cost with that, but we're, I've got a meeting Friday with, uh, the Mayor Revere and the City Manager for Chelsea, so we're gonna talk to them, propose it, see what they think, and, you know, if we can maybe do a group effort and try to defer some of the costs, so. Uh, we are working on that, so I didn't want you to think we weren't doing anything. Um, we talked about Woodward and Curran, uh, they'll start the survey work soon, uh, in the next week or so, and they say once they start, it should take approximately eight weeks to complete, uh, to get the survey plan done. Um, get everything, I think I did. And lastly, uh, I do wanna point out, um, kudos to, uh, one of our own. I don't know if anybody saw on the news today, but I went to a police officer, um, Officer.
Doroski.
Doroski, thank you, I was reading it off air. Um, was basically coming out of CPR training, was able to save a, you know, help save a small child from choking today. So it was, I know, certainly got some press coverage, and we put out a statement, so I wanted to, you know, kudos to him, and thank you for.
Thank you.
Um, and, I'll, any further follow-up questions, sorry?
Thank you. Couple of questions for the Council Munson?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the Woodward and Curran part, um, the eight-week survey plan, or eight weeks to create a plan, or to kind of dissect.
Survey, yeah.
Survey. Um, will that include the actual, uh, the, where the water comes and goes, and the tide, and the, um, you know, so there's a, a duck flap, I don't know the exact terminology, but at the end of Towston, it won't include any of that?
It's a survey of the existing conditions, that's what it is. It was the first phase, just to get the ball rolling. The total survey work to do everything you're talking about was, you know, six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Oh, oh, I see.
This first fifty thousand just gets them out there with the equipment, starts shooting the, the grades and the baseline work, and what's there, and where the pipes go out existing, you know, that kind of stuff. That's the first step.
I just, I think it would be worth, if, I don't know if you're gonna be on pres- uh, 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 you know, on location with them, it'd be great to just walk to the edge of Towston, across the street, across Pleasant, just walk there and look for an actual, like, flap. I don't think it exists anymore.
It's in the mud, it's there, it's probably in the mud, yeah. Steve and I have done it.
Oh, you have?
Looked, yeah.
So I'm sure that that pipe work is, is crap underneath, so, sorry for being so vulgar, but, um, but you know.
But that's part of what we're trying to solve, right? So that's what we're gonna do, the survey work, and.
Okay, excellent. So at least it's being looked at, it's not necessarily gonna be surveyed, but, and then, um, um, I think that's it.
Counsel Tassary. Uh, Manager Moreno, you mentioned the consulting that we're working with to draw the map of the, uh, ambulance service?
It's a company that sells software to do that, yeah, yep.
And is that gonna help us get, uh, DPH-approved service zone plan? I know that they kinda knocked us in, in a, in an article that the town doesn't have a DPH, Department of Public Health ser- uh, ambulance, that, an approved service zone plan for ambulances right now, with the, on file with, with the DPH, for whatever reason that is, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll look into that, I don't have that answer off the top of my head, so I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel DeMarco.
Real quick, Tony, um, on the website, I've been speaking with a, a couple constituents, and in the interest of transparency, a lot of times, uh, people do their homework before they come to the Town Council meeting, and they'll have questions about the agenda and whatnot. In the meantime, where they just see the agenda, we get a, a full packet, which has motion questions listed out. I was wondering, just to help the public, if it would be possible, instead of just attaching the agenda, if we could also attach the entire packet, so that way people who wanna go, it's public record anyway, you know what I mean? So that way, people, if they wanna do some research on it beforehand, can do that before they come to the meeting, so that way, there's just a little more transparency.
Certainly doable, if that's, uh, you know, work with Council President on that, uh, that's something I've done in the past, certainly, yeah, uh, doable at prior towns I've worked in. And we're also upgrading the website right now, so we're gonna have a lot more bells and whistles and tools available to us, once we launch that in the early spring.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Okay, and, I suppose it.
Thank you. Uh, just a quick question on the website redesign. I don't know where we are in the process, but is there time to get ideas from either the council or the public about things they wanna see on the website, pain points, things like that, like to suggest, or are we beyond that?
We're a little beyond that, but I mean, certainly we've got time to make some final tweaks, so we can, if you have ideas or thoughts and suggestions. I mean, we're a little, you know, stuck in a little box of what, you know, Civic Plus gives us, so there isn't too much flexibility, but if you've got ideas, certainly send them along.
Sure.
We're always welcome.
All right.
Thank you.
Did you have a quick follow-up?
Yeah, just a, yeah, um, the old middle school, it's, was asked of, by one of the constituents to always have it on the Town Manager Report, um, and then also, as far as, um, zoning goes, um, is there a, uh, a potential to have, or is there any kind of, uh, assignment on you to create, or to help get a master plan underway, or that has never been assigned to you at this point?
It's something I'm looking into, it's not, hasn't been put on my, I mean, it's been brought up by people, but yeah, we wanna look for some grant funding out there to get the, you know, we've done it, it's been a few years since you've done it, so doing an updated master plan. And first off, a housing production plan, uh, cause one of the things we don't have in place is a housing production plan, or at least none that I can find, anyway. So if anybody has info that's, we have one, that'd be great, but I don't think we do an updated one, so. We'd wanna do a housing production plan first, and then that would follow up with a, either a master plan or a community development plan, you know, which the council would obviously be involved in, so.
And then as far as the old middle school, do we have, uh, I know we're in the midst of a major, uh, you know, three A kind of discussion, but, uh, is there any kind of, um, review time set for the, uh, the, the proposal that we got, the RFI that we got?
Yeah, we're hoping to have a, the firm here at either the first or second meeting in March.
Okay.
To do a presentation.
All right, thank you.
And just a quick thing on Rachel's, uh, FAQ, I'll ask Larissa if that can be put up on the website, too.
Absolutely.
For the town to see, take a look at.
Mr. President, one follow-up.
Yeah.
One follow-up on the middle school? Um, I think you mentioned this, just not that many minutes ago. If the, uh, current schools are at a hundred and five percent capacity, it may actually be a blessing in disguise, we haven't gotten very far with the middle school, if we needed to run to the school site.
I know.
So, um, I wouldn't discount that for my master plan.
Yeah, me neither.
That's why you do the master plan, so.
Thank you.
Um, CDICR?
Yep, um, I, not at the meeting, uh, but they did have one last week. Um, I did get, I spoke with, um, or via text and email, uh, with Kelly Gall, uh, the Chair. Um, synopsis of the meeting was, um, Black History Month, the, uh, CDICR Facebook page is featuring contributions from black Americans throughout the month. Um, in March, they're gonna highlight a local business that reflects, uh, Women's Irish and Greek History Month. Um, CDICR would like to sponsor and host a speaker series on diversity. Uh, they're currently researching venues, topics, and potential speakers. Uh, they're also looking into the opportunity to partner with another organization for an international night in late spring. And, uh, they're in the beginning phases of hosting a sporting event slash competition for the youth in Winthrop, uh, in August this year.
Wow.
Very busy meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, for that.
So at this point in the agenda, hopefully at the next meeting, we will have a spot for a policymaking board update. We hope to vote on that a little later, but I'm gonna take the opportunity now, just to, you know, try to start it off. Uh, Winter Planning Board, uh, had a meeting, continued subdivision discussion on forty R. Bang Street, will continue to next meeting for further information. Five Fremont Street, review current status and update, will continue reviewing during construction phases. Winter Board of Appeals, uh, one zero zero one Shirley Street, special permit for variance to redevelop into townhouses. This was continued from January meeting and will be continued until next meeting for further information. Seventy-four Quincy Ave, special permit to convert one family into two-family with relief for parking. This was continued until next meeting due to voting member having a family emergency. Uh, Commission on Disability, this committee is back up and running strong. There is a handbook now available on information pertaining to disability needs in the town of Winthrop and with the state. Please contact Town Clerk's Office for copy of this handbook. Board of Health Discussion, we have the Board of Health Chair here, so if there's anything you'd like to add. Um, I guess, discussion points, Lewis Lake Water Quality will have a report, Director of Public Health and Clinical Services update, Commissioner on Inspeccional Services update, grease trap regulations, dogs at restaurants, restaurants' grading systems, forty R. Bang Street definitive subdivision. Anything to add?
Do you want me to give you any details of any of those, or?
If you'd like to spend a few minutes to talk about.
Um, I don't have, right, for me, so, uh, there was an inquiry about dogs in restaurants. First of all, dogs are not allowed in restaurants unless it's service dog. Uh, City of Boston had pa- uh, last year had passed a, uh, a proposal which they're allowing for dogs at outside, um, patios where there's food, uh, if they wanted to comply. We surveyed the, um, restaurants in Winthrop, there's no interest, so we're not doing anything with that. Um, Restaurant Grading System Algae is requested that we, think about putting in a pro- uh, a process like a lot of other communities where, based on, uh, the inspections that they do now, that restaurants would be getting a grading system by, if they passed. High enough would be an A, B, C, but they would also have an opportunity to correct those deficiencies before there was a letter grade. So we're in the preliminary stages in that, we're getting a draft, I'll come before you guys, and let, let you get more of the details. Um, we're trying to update the grease trap regulation, which hasn't been done for like twelve years, and get a new technologies and whatever we don't want. We wanna make sure that what happened a number of years ago in this business district with problems with grease in the sewers, it caused a lot of problems, so we're gonna make sure that we don't have that happening. Um.
Lewis Lake, water quality?
Uh, that was a question that had come before us, and we hadn't got back from Steve Cal a response. It was a question that was asked by a constituent whether there was any water testing at Lewis Lake. I know in the summary, do, there's testing that's done at the beaches, but there was a question that came in, uh, passed, Steve said there was somebody who did some kind of, uh, testing, but we haven't got a response back, so I don't know if that's something.
I'll find out, I'm sure.
Forty R. Bang Street?
Bang Street, we basically, uh, when, when this proposal was up three, four years ago, the Board of Health, we sent a letter with our concerns about water runoff, trees, et cetera. That's when Astrid Wines, Susan McGuire are now in the board. Uh, we brought up that issue again to the board, cause we had a lot of inquiries. Basically, the board, agreed with the letter that we wrote before, I think you guys got a copy of that, uh, that I sent over to you guys. So we, and we sent that to the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Old Business, um, Counselor DeRas.
Uh, yes, we have three, uh, motions.
Do you have the motions, or?
I have the motions.
Okay.
I do. Um, would you like me to read them?
Yes, please. Just the text of the motion.
Let me start with this one.
Satin of fifty thousand.
Yep. Um, uh, first motion, the Town Council transfer fifty thousand from the Town Council Reserve Account to a new special article, uh, account titled Stormwater Study for Phase One of the Stormwater Study for the Tillston Road, uh, Girdlestone Road, and Pico Ave areas, or take another, any other action thereto.
It's Towston.
Towston, sorry, what did I say?
Tillston.
Towston.
So that motion came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion on the motion. I think we've talked about this a lot, it's obviously an extremely worthy project, and, uh, glad it's going forward. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Tassary?
Yes.
Counselor Facillo? Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Swope?
Yes.
Counselor Ilo?
Yes.
Counselor DeRas?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
Council President Luteri?
Yes, that motion has passed. Counselor DeRas?
Second motion. Move that the Town Council vote to appropriate thirty-three thousand five hundred sixty-four dollars and ten cents from free cash to the opioid settlement fund as per DLS Bulletin BUL twenty-two-three-oh-seven attached. This amount represents the settlement funds received during fiscal year twenty-three and not spent, that must be spent for opioid remediation-related purposes. Note that future receipts will be deposited directly into this special revenue fund as per the DLS guidance, or take any other action relative thereto.
This motion also came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second, discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Tassary?
Yes.
Counselor Facillo? Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Swope?
Yes.
Counselor Ilo?
Yes.
Counselor DeRas?
Yes.
Vice President Belcher?
Yes.
Council President Luteri?
Yes, that motion has passed. Counselor DeRas?
Final one, move that the Town Council appropriate in the handicap parking fines account the amount of twenty thousand dollars to be used for expenses to benefit persons with disabilities in accordance with MGL Chapter Forty, Section Twenty-two G, or take any other action thereto.
This motion also came out of committee with positive recommendation, does not require a second, any discussion on the motion. Counselor Munson?
Yes, can you just explain the process in which this happens, and, and why, why now?
Uh, well, why is because we've never done it before, and we thought it was time to do some upgrades to handicap accessible units around the town. Um, this fund currently has a little over seventy-six thousand dollars in it, this is to take twenty thousand out. I'll give it over to Vice President Belcher to talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you. Uh, the Commission on Disabilities has been very active recently. They just put together a resource guide, like President Luteri mentioned. Um, this'll pay for some of the cost of that. Uh, we also are working on some accessible events, recreational events for the summer, and Mass General Law states that any fines for handicap parking violations have to be put aside for a fund that benefits, um, the disability community. So this just allows the commission to, to use the funds.
That's great, thank you. That's great. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. The ayes have it, motion has passed. New business, council, town council modify Section Ten, Twenty-four, Oh, One, Zero of Town Ordinance, Schedule of One Way Streets, which includes Somerset. This is being sent to Rules and Ordinance. Town council amend the council rules and procedures, Rule Four, Order of Business to Include Policy-Making Committees. So, this is a motion that we had discussed at the last meeting. Again, this was from a constituent at a, at somebody's, at Councilor DiMarco's meeting, and I thought it was a really good idea, and so we would like to add it and make it number after the CDICR, so it would be number either eleven or thirteen, and change the other numbers accordingly. So, there is a motion to adjust the council rule, amend the council rules to include that. Motion made by Vice President Belcher, seconded by Councilor DiMarco. Any further discussion on the motion? Councilor Munson?
When, I love it, and I've been, I've been looking forward to more of this transparency, so it's great. But the only thing is, when you're doing it verbally and not, you know, it's so much information and so detailed that I can't retain it or most, I don't know if people can retain it. So, I would love to see, maybe through an amendment, to have it written. I guess during the minutes would actually include the details, like for example, you read like four or five things just now, earlier, that actually were like specific locations and the decisions. I couldn't retain but the first two because I was just writing the notes. So, it'd be cool if they were just written somewhere, and that's what I'm asking for is potentially amending that to include it written.
I'm sure we could get it included in the minutes, and I would, would have assumed that Michigan University degree would have enabled.
You talk very fast.
Football isn't everything there, Council. The comment is taken and we will, we will definitely add it into the minutes.
All right, appreciate it, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. The ayes have it, thank you. Town council waive Rule Two-One, Schedule of Meetings and Discuss March Twenty-Twenty-Four Dates. The first meeting in March is scheduled for March Fifth, which is primary day. We do not meet on election day, so I'm asking for a motion to amend to, instead of the first and third Tuesdays of the month, in March, it would be the second and third Tuesday, so the meeting would be March Twelfth, which is the only meeting we're changing. So, March Fifth meeting would become March Twelfth. There's a motion by Councilor DiMarco, seconded by Councilor Belcher, any, Vice President Belcher, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. The ayes have it. That has passed. Town discuss Community Preservation Act. I'm going to let Tony speak a little bit about this, it's something that we've talked about since Tony came on board. I think it's a very worthy idea and I think it's something that I would like to create a committee to get some knowledge out into the town, how this can be of help and what it would entail. I'll turn it over to town.
Yep, just as we spoke about before when I did a presentation on this, we'd like to have, you know, be a CPA community. When we originally reached out to them, the Community Preservation Coalition, they recommended that we do it at a presidential election. They said, you know, doing it on the even years, November is the best bet, so we waited until upcoming, November of twenty-twenty-four is upon us. They recommended getting a committee together so we can start the education process and, you know, have some public sessions and explain to them what it is, what we can use it for, you know, how it's, the funds are distributed, how they're collected on your tax bill, all those kind of questions. You know, essentially, I would, you know, and again, it's up to the council, but you can go anywhere from one percent to three percent. A lot of communities do one and a half, which would be my recommendation, you know, based on if you just, the way it works, if you take your value of your home, back off a hundred thousand dollars, so if, you know, the average home in Winthrop is six hundred and twenty-five thousand, you would take off a hundred thousand, base it on five hundred and twenty-five thousand, then you do the divided by a thousand to get your tax rate, but that would let you know exactly what your tax bill should be, and then you pay one percent of that or one and a half percent of that, you know. So, on your average home, it would be around probably ninety-five dollars a year, you know, based on the six twenty-five number. And that would be billed out quarterly as we get our tax bills, so about twenty-five dollars a quarter, ballpark numbers. And then the state matches. Now, that match from the state varies from year to year. Last fiscal year was thirty-eight percent, this fiscal year it's twenty-one percent, so that number will fluctuate. It certainly went down a lot when the City of Boston came on board, you know, they've got a larger pool, so they get a little more piece of the pie, but, you know, it's, it's money we can use for a lot of different things, you know, you can use it for creating housing units, historic preservation projects, you know, all sorts of things, and also recreational fields, that's another thing you can use it for. Prior town I worked in used, you know, they bonded actually three million, three or four million dollars, and they built softball fields and a concession stand, and they used the monies coming in this to pay the principal and interest on it over twenty years. Those are the kind of things you can do, so, you know, certainly a lot of flexibility and exciting projects we could do with it, but, you know, it's like anything else, it is an additional charge on the tax, we want to make sure we, but it's one of those earmarked ones, you can't use it for just anything, it's got a use, and it's also got a match that's going to come down from the state, you know, money we're leaving on the table. I'd love a committee to get that.
We'll talk about, get a committee combined, including a council or two and many private citizens.
We added some interest from the public that, you know, they want to help with it as well, so.
And it would be, it would entail just a educational process over X amount of period of time, it would go, it would be a valid question.
It's a valid question, yeah.
Eventually, the town would decide if it's something that they're interested in doing or not.
And you can also use it to preserve open space, not that we have a ton of open space to preserve, but that's the other thing you can use it for as well.
Okay. We already discussed three-A zoning. Public comments. Seeing none?
I'll let Fucillo go first. Fucillo Maliosa, Precinct Five. Just to, I just want to clarify something. So, we've done our homework, we've reached out to the CFO, I've reached out to Ms. Kelly as far as the grant money for the last ten years. In the last ten years, the CFO shared that out of the four grants that she had stated in the first bullet point, no money for the first, no money for the, sorry, he, the CFO, right?
Dylan.
No money for the first, no money for the second, two-point-three-eight million for CBD, but that was also the time when we had the great Speaker of the House, Delio, in our corner, okay? And that was in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. And then for the fourth, there was no money. He was going to just double-check with the second one, with the Housing Board, and we haven't heard back from him. So, we haven't received any of those, those funds since Delio was in office. As far as the other grants that were added on, once the governor realized, like she wasn't going to, there was pushback, she added more grants to the guidelines. The MVP grants for Belle Isle Marsh, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, a hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, I'm just going to round to the nearest hole to make everybody see. Hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, two-hundred-ninety-one-thousand. MVP Grant Community-Based Preparedness Network, twenty-twenty-three, was eighty-seven-thousand. The Mass Downtown Initiative in two thousand twenty-two was twenty-five-thousand, and then the most recent grant, which was the EOH for the, for the grant for the next consultant, was forty-eight. And then there was a mass development grant in two thousand seventeen, but Rachel couldn't get me numbers on that, so we're kind of ahead of you guys, you know, and like, I feel like the residents shouldn't be doing the hard work here, should be coming from you guys, sharing that information, and then when, you know, we're, we're telling people that it could be up to ten million dollars, and thank goodness I have this information in front of me, it was two-point-three. I mean, we need to be, we need to know these facts ahead of time so that we get these, these answers out there. You know, everybody keeps saying the Winthrop, no to three-A people are giving misinformation. No, we're giving you the reality to it, this is what's going to happen. Just recently, a house on Main Street went, went up for sale, well, it's coming soon, okay? Right next door, there's a multifamily listed, it's a single family with a garage with an in-law above it. Prime, prime spot for this three-A development. You're going to see a developer come in, they're going to buy out both of those properties, side by side, shared driveway, they're going to level it, because remember, it's not what's there, it's pre-existing to what it could be for zoning. They're going to go, there's depth there. They could go back, the Main Street slash, it's not Revere Street, it's, it's Main and Winthrop, three and a half story max. You really want to see that going down and taking away our single-family homes? That's what's going to happen. There's thirty-six percent left, thirty-six percent of our, our single-family homes in Winthrop, and there goes one of them, you could consider the other one a single-family home, there goes two, and then what's going to happen? The developer is going to knock on the person's door, offer them five hundred, five hundred over whatever the, the price is on that next home, and it's going to go down and down and down. You've all seen it on Revere Beach. That's what they're doing, they all went straight down. And I actually was driving over there at the other day, and I said to myself, wow, there's that little space in between where all the apartments have gone up, you got that green space, and then there's a single-family home right there, who is going to want to look at that, living there? And what they're going to do, they'll sell. And then the next person will sell, and then all Revere Beach will be wiped. This is what's going to come. They're going to tell you it's just zoning, the next mandate will be built, and then they'll repeat it all over again and say there's not enough housing. Leave it up to the community to decide, if we do a study and we don't have enough affordable housing, then we zone for what is necessary for us. Do not give it up. Cheryl Howland made a great point at the last couple of meetings, we're doing it with the CBD, we're doing it with other parcels in town, we don't need to be doing both three-A and CBD, we've been doing it from the start, we need to get back to contacting Representative Turco. There's several of you here who have been endorsed by Senator Edwards, she's the Chair of the Joint Committee on Housing. Start calling her up now and start telling her that we can't do this, it's not going to work in Winthrop.
Thank you.
Hi.
Vasi Hamilton.
There certainly has, thank you, Precinct Two, there certainly has been a lot of information shared here, we've asked the Planning Board to come back with a lot of these questions, and I think I'm agreeing that we have to keep our community as we want it. I understand the grant process, but I see that there's a lot, and I hear that there's a lot of questions yet to be answered by the state, and I would like to invite these people to the next council meeting, Senator Turco, Lydia Edwards, and even, we are, we are a unique community, we have all heard about it, how we, how we are unique, but we also have to remember that Winthrop is, was the home of a governor, Winthrop was, is the home of a former Speaker of the House, Senator Mr. J.C., Representative Trevolini lives here. We need their input and their perspective as to how to approach this as a, in an important and direct way, so we can push back and get the answers that we need. That's the first thing I think about three-A. Wait a minute, hang on one second. I want just to follow up and get, I would like an update on Zoom bombing that, I don't think it's ever been updated on to what happened or what the result was that, that maybe there were some answers, or maybe, I think it was just left hanging, maybe Chief Delahaye has some more input on that, that's another thing. Also, as we get to fifty, I thank you so much for the money to move forward with Tillston and Girdlestone Road in that development area, and I know there's going to be engineers, but do we reach out to the Army Corps of Engineers? That is the ocean line, and I know they worked on Shore Drive and created less flooding with what they worked on there, and also down on Grandview, they worked there too. So, maybe we can reach out to the Army Corps of Engineers on the flooding issues. Hang on one second, I have it right here, and I don't want to waste any more of your time. And I agree with Councilwoman Swope on televising the, the school committee meetings and the Planning Board meetings. I know it might be difficult to do, or we have CAT, we also have people at the high school who have that type of IT work, that they, maybe they can run these WCAT meetings, and just so more of the town gets the exposure and the information from the actual mouths of the people who are serving us. That's number two. And let's see, we have, we have, I like the idea about the Preservation Act, I think it'll be wonderful as we move forward, getting a new fire station and possibly a arts and community center with the old fire stations in the future planning of our town. And we need to update, and thank you for saying that we don't have an updated evacuation plan, because we do need it, we, we need an evacuation plan. I'm always thinking the what-ifs. Is that my three minutes?
It is. That's okay, you can finish up.
What if, what if there was an explosion or something at the MWRA? The what-ifs, we need that plan in place, and the town needs to know it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Vasi. Yes, Jeff. Time it, everybody.
Precinct Three. So, you all mentioned, most of yous mentioned how pre-existing doesn't count. Do we get it yet that they just don't care? They don't. So, if they did, they'd be counting that, we're already, the housing is, we're pretty jammed in. We're going to develop on our own as a town, that never stops. Houses get old, they get torn down, whatever, they get rebuilt or refurbished, whatever. It's going to continue, and that's the way it should, should work, not being told what we have to do. Get me wrong, we pay taxes, these grants that they're threatening to withhold from us, that's our tax money, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know, I, years ago, I heard this term, no taxation without representation. I think we're getting to that point, so anyways, I'm a little dramatic here, but I think you get my point, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Bill?
Bill Schmidt, Precinct Five, so, I just want to speak in favor of the Community Preservation Act, I talked to Tony about it a while ago, I told him if I can be helpful, I'd be more than willing to do that. Just the spreadsheet, which he didn't, he hasn't even read it, it's a hundred and ninety-six towns have already adopted, there's a lot of money, actually, already lobbied out, they sent it, she was very pleased that Tony was pushing that, and I said to all, that's great, but we may, need to make sure that you put a lot of money in the budget for it, for the match, because in some ways, they haven't put in a lot of money, and so you don't have a lot of money to get, so that's, that's it. The other thing I would say, and again, just, just as an aside, you're talking about affordable housing, if you're ever going to allow bigger developments, a lot of communities have percentage of that dedicated to affordable housing, so that's something you could think about, something if you want to do that.
Thank you. Good.
Trying to be quick, we've already discussed three a a lot. I found it interesting that they brought up fair housing laws with this unfair law they're imposing on us, kind of doesn't mesh, mesh together. The other thing that I want to talk about is the consultant money and the consulting, if you follow the money where it comes from and where they're consistently getting paid, like MAPC, it's all state money. A lot of these consultants are constantly getting state money, so of course, they're always going to promote what the state wants, so no matter what consultant we get in here, they're already getting the grant, plus they're, all the, I think it has like sixty-six consultants or something tied to them, the last consultant firm, I believe it's around sixty-six, they're getting state funding, of course, they're going to push this and, and not be in the best interest of the towns, so I just want to throw that out. I'd like to bring up Zoom for policymaking boards again, I really like to see that kind of push, to see if we can get that on a consistent basis. And along with this whole three-A, yeah, there's, you know, no real age, I mean, low-income tied into it, so once this law is in effect, step two is going to be a law that says now you have to implement low-income housing. You're going to see it, the buildup's already in there in the background, just got to go on Massachusetts, Mast on Gov, and you'll see some stuff building up towards it. So, first will be this, second will be the second law portion, and remember, California has implemented almost over two hundred laws trying to implement this. And then the third one, which I know I get some heat for, is the meter on the rink, I know we just tossed forty grand over to the rink, I know that'll help pay for their sixteen-thousand-dollar bill or whatever it was. I'd like to see or understand if that meter is functioning yet, a hundred percent, because it is an enterprise fund, I know at times we have to subsidize it, but just want to make sure that that's being covered and they're self-sufficient.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. Any other public comments? Seeing none? I will say that, again, thank you, Larissa, for being here.
Anytime.
And I did get from Denise, just to make sure we remind everybody that presidential primary will be March Fifth, early voting hours at Winthrop Town Hall are as follows. Saturday, February twenty-fourth, nine AM to five PM. Monday, February twenty-sixth, eight AM to four-thirty PM. Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, eight AM to seven PM. Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, eight AM to four-thirty. Thursday, February twenty-ninth, leap year, eight AM to seven PM. Friday, March first, ten AM to one PM. And the last day to register to vote for the presidential primary is Saturday, February twenty-fourth, and it will be nine AM to five PM. Town hall will be open for voter registration and/or drop-off registration forms. Encourage you all to vote. Board members are still needed, town, contact Town Clerk's Office. Any, we'll start at Mr. Tassaneri's end for this, any public relations, anything you'd like to add?
Nope.
Thank you, Councilor Munson.
Yep, I have two things from the Odd Fellows. We have a upcoming blood drive coming up here in March eighth, I believe, you can look it up on redcross.org. We're also hosting a St. Patty's Day meal and comedy night. It's a comedy, actually, it's a late lunch, it's two to five, and so that should be fun. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Vice President Belcher?
Thank you. The Commission on Disabilities is hosting an event, talking about all things that have to do with social security at the Senior to do with social security at the Senior Center on the 28th at 1:00 p.m.
Thank you. Councilor DiMarco?
Once again, great job by Officer Jaworski, God bless him, that's awesome. And also, got to mention it, Winthrop Men's Hockey, NEC Champions, so. Going into the tournament strong.
More to come.
Let's end it on a good note, that's all I got.
Councilor Aylo?
None for me.
Councilor Swope? Councilor DeRoz?
Quickly, thank you, Town Manager, for the CDICR report. Congratulations to Kelly Gall and CDICR, really coming together with a lot of events, and I'm, I'm happy to see that, because proclamations like History and Heritage Months that we did at the last meeting can either sit on a piece of paper or they can come to life, so that's the way they're coming to life, so fantastic. And a little plug along those lines, as you said, March is a busy month for these observances. We have Women's, History Month, Greek, looking to you, Fucillo, for ideas on, around Greek Heritage Month.
Yes.
As well as Irish, of course, so March will be a fun month. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. Do I see a motion to adjourn? Motion by Vice President? Second?
You're learning.
Motion by Vice President. Belcher seconded by Councilor Swope. Any discussion on it? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.